To celebrate 150 years of Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the hearts, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. So can I have a motion in a second to approve the resolution as read?
I will motion.
There you go. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. More stuff for me to sign. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the support plan renewal for our IT support with a flat rate per month of $2,018.62?
Motion?
Second? I'll second it. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Lead Agency Response Request, 345 Ridge Road. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to acknowledge receipt and to sign the request of the Village of Woodbury Planning Board to serve as lead agency on the application received from 345 Ridge Road? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Lead Agency Response Part Two. Congregation Gemellus at 24 South Fields. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to acknowledge receipt and to sign the request of the Village of Woodbury Planning Board to serve as lead agency on an application received from the Congregation Gemellus for an amended site plan, special permit, ridge preservation, and ARB approval? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I have a motion in a second now to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the agreement with New York State Energy and Research and Development Authority, NYSERTA, to make strides in the area of clean energy? The Village of Woodbury has met its requirements for grant funding under the program. This agreement lays out the terms and conditions with which the village plans to implement the Clean Energies Program. Motion in a second?
All motion.
Do I have a second? Second by Trustee Fryban. All in favor?
Aye.
And let me just say this for everybody who doesn't know. The little woman sitting over there, Lisa Hints, is a dynamo. This is really her and her doing. She is the best, most financially solvent department I have. She's awesome. All right. Authorize me, the mayor, can I have a motion in a second to accept the file? The rates are set forth by Direct Energy as, was it, 8.72200 cents per kilowatt hour 24 months? Those are the terms, ladies and gentlemen. Do I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, this was just received this afternoon. I was looking at the numbers. I'd like to defer this to the next meeting.
I really can't.
Can't.
I need to do it.
You can because it's already expired. It expired on the 11th.
The price is only good for 24 hours?
That's right. It's long.
I'm sorry?
It's dated. It expired yesterday.
We just got it this evening.
The document that you sent me said it expires on the 11th.
What would change between now and?
We literally just got it at like 6 o'clock.
I would like to see their extrapolation of what this two-year contract is going to cost.
I think you're talking about the pricing proposal? That's dated the 11th.
Yeah, there was a pie chart and a graph that was also included that explains the projection of the energy costs over the next, over to 2027. And in the graph, she explains that you can see the spike. That's when Indian Point went offline, and the prices are just going to get higher and higher, which is why your consultant is recommending that you do the two years at the lock-in price that's there now.
I understand, but I would like to have two weeks to look at this so that I can actually see.
You can, but in two weeks, the price could go up quite a bit, she said.
It could go down.
I mean, that's entirely possible, yeah. I doubt it.
The only, the only time it looks like it went up was 2022, when the war in Ukraine happened. So I think we should be a little more stable from now on.
And it's only two, three companies showing, this is a broker's approach. I think we should actually check with New York State because they made some accommodations for getting some breaks on power.
Well, once again, I have a motion in a second to approve the rates as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Trustee Fryban?
No.
No. Okay. And just for the record, I would just like to thank you and Jessica McLennan for all your work on this. I know it's not...
My president is excited.
Oh, yes. I'm sure it's...
Is it powerful?
It's powerful.
Shocking.
Since Kelly Norton doesn't seem to have enough work, she decided to review several areas of our code and is proposing or asking us to propose local law seven of 2024, typos and clarifications in the village code. So is there anything you really need to mention on it?
So, yeah, I have to do that one. I have one more from John, too. So, as you know, the code is reviewed frequently by the building department, your planning board, your zoning board, and these are a couple of items that have been on an ongoing list for some typos, clarifications, things like that, just to correct them as it goes along. If you move forward, I will have for the next time that you meet, a red line version with two more that are just modifications that are pretty minor. So just thought it would be a good idea now, when you have a handful of them, to clean them up so you can move on to bigger and better things.
Okay. So can I have a motion in a second to introduce introductory local law seven of 2024?
She's going to make adjustments, maybe.
But you can introduce it in this form. They're minor.
Well, I saw some things as well.
Well, I didn't get any emails from you telling me what they were.
I got this yesterday at 4:00.
Why don't you send them to me and I can take a look? And if they are appropriate to be included, I could include it in the red line version.
Did we say October or September? Next meeting.
I think policy requires I'm going to have your final version in their hand seven days before the public hearing.
Yes, that's when they're going to adopt that final version. That's why it gets referred to the planning board, the planning department. I've recommended that it also be referred to the building department in this instance, specifically because they review these provisions. So I anticipate that there will be additional modifications based on those referrals. But again, minor modifications.
Okay. So I have, I need a motion in a second to introduce introductory local law seven of 2024.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Just wondering, so to be clear, you're going to go back, do the revision, and then we'll get a version we can kind of have more time to look through?
Yeah.
Because I briefly, I mean, like you said, we only really did get this 24 hours ago, and there's a couple of sections of the law, although most of it appears to be just replacing town with village in the code, which is minor, like you said, but I just, yeah. I can kind of understand where he's coming from with wanting more time to review the law.
Well, it's just being introduced. You're obviously, you're not taking any action on it.
Yeah, no, understood, understood. But, yeah. Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Can I motion in a second to refer introductory local law seven to the village building department, village highway department, planning board, and zoning board?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion in a second to authorize village clerk McLennan to schedule a public hearing on introductory local law seven of 2024 for October 10th at 7:30 PM to entertain public comments?
Motion.
So moved by trustee Fryban, second by trustee Ferrelli. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're getting into the nitty-gritty. Almost done. All right. Authorizing legal action, 48 Smith Clover Road. So do I need to read this?
Yeah.
Okay. Whereas, I'm going to read it. It's not too long. Okay. Whereas JCD-CBC LLC has violated the village code by using the property known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 231, block 3, lot 5.12, as a staging site for construction without proper approvals being granted or permits being issued. And whereas it is public knowledge that JCD-CBC LLC intends on continuing to use the property in said fashion without applying for the proper approvals and/or permits from the Village of Woodbury. And whereas the village board of trustees wishes to enjoin the property owner from using the property in said fashion in violation of the village code and which has safety and general welfare concerns for the village residents unless and until the proper approvals and permits have been granted. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees hereby authorizes Norton and Tory LLP of Goshen, New York to prepare all necessary papers and file in the New York State Supreme Court, any, New York State Supreme Court or any other court of appropriate jurisdiction, any legal action or actions necessary, and any appeals at such time as permitted by the law and upon any appropriate cause of action and/or violation against JCD-CBC LLC or any other appropriate party, and seeking any lawful remedies under state and local law, including injunctions, fines, and penalties to enjoy any future violations of this nature. So can I have a motion in a second to authorize the law firm of Norton and Tory LLP to initiate legal action against JCD-CBC LLC? Okay. Do you want anything?
I think so, too.
I do have a question for the building inspector, if I may?
Well, let me get my motion in a second out of the way first.
Make the motion.
Second.
Second, if I sue. Discussion.
I appreciate the information. I believe you talked to Matt earlier about the background here, but the thing I wondered was you had, one of the things that was indicated that they are filling wetlands and basically violating DEC regulations as well, are they not?
That is correct.
And has DEC been notified and are they taking any action?
They've been notified. Whether they're taking action, I'm not aware.
So they never responded to the, because they have a reputation, up hole after tuxedo, you know? That, it's a landfill issue.
Their response is they will investigate.
Can I ask how long ago that was?
I'd have to go back and look. I don't know off the top of my head. This has been ongoing for, since before I started, so.
I understand, but I think this is time to get Mr. Scoofus or Mr. Ikas involved if they're not responding.
I will reach out again.
Because this is, this could be an extended lawsuit.
Okay.
But I will move the motion.
Okay. So I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Do I need a roll call? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Block party request for Sutherland Drive. Can I have a motion in a second to remit a block party on Sutherland Drive in Highland Mills on September 14, 2024, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM?
All second that?
Are we invited?
Are we in?
Are we invited?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Come on down. I'm inviting this state senator as well.
Awesome.
Okay. Last item on the agenda, people. Liquor license renewal for Gacho Camino, Camano. Notice was received on August 8th and again on August 12th, 2024, from Camino, Camano, I'll get there, Incorporated DBA Iron Chef located at 365 Route 32 in Central Valley. They are applying for a liquor license as well as asking for renewal for their current liquor license while they rebrand from the New York State Division of Alcohol Beverage Control, State Liquor Authority. For the record, I would like to state a letter was sent to the police department to determine if there were any reasons why the village should object to this application being approved, and the Woodbury PD stated there have been no issues or concerns to prohibit the application. Therefore, village clerk McLennan, will you please send a letter to the State Liquor Authority advising them of our findings? I still need that. And that is it. Ladies and gentlemen, that ends regular business. Nobody was hurt and nobody lost an eye. So that's always a good thing. Public comment on anything, anything, and Maria is flying to the podium. Started her descent early.
I sure did.
That's another hat now, Maria.
First of all, congratulate, congratulations to Desiree and Rob on your contracts. Great job. Thank you to the board for appointing me to the position of the village, to the Village Beautification Committee. I've already started a journal at home, so let's have a meeting next week. Thank you to the board for putting a moratorium continued, and also to the letter to Senator Attorney Kelly, I know it's, it's, it's early, but on page one of your, I have a, I have a, yeah, it's on the village introductory local law seven?
Is this the superintendent? I know that.
You're going to take out the superintendent? Okay. Okay. And then also, see, I did read this in three hours ago, so I had time. And I did work today. And I did get dinner somewhat.
Wait, 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 wait. Did you just ask her if she makes dinner? We all know, no, no, and Bob's not here to...
No, Bob's here.
Bob's there?
Bob's here. He's sitting back there quietly. We went out. I paid for, oh, okay, me and you, whatever. You did tonight. On page two, under removal of snow and ice required, I understand those changes and everything, but this is to Rob. It says ground in the Village of Woodbury, abutting any, upon any street, avenue, or public place. Does that include people who live on the state highway or the county highway? It's not clear.
It's going to, it has to be referred to Rob and he'll get a better understanding of it.
Okay, because I was just curious, because being on 32, I do plow wherever I have to and clean what needs to be, but it wasn't in there. And as your former mentor and my former planning board attorney, if it's not written, doesn't hold any water. While you're doing this, changes, and I greatly appreciate it, one thing that you really truly missed, which I was supposed to come back to you in July, the sandwich board sign. Please, can?
It has to be a separate one because it can only be under one category per law, but I do have that one. I just wanted to get this one done out of the way first, once they start finding out because there's...
I understand that, but I told you, yeah.
Two-year elsewhere, so it's one.
I said I would come back after July, and it's been two months, because Woodbury, what it used to look like when I first came here in 1979, yes, I'm married 45 years, Jimmy. God bless Bob. The sandwich boards, I get it with the law, I understand it, but property owners along Route 32, I've been traveling to different areas in different states, their main highways, their residents, their businesses, everything's clean. Lawn is mowed, there's no sandwich board signs. We're looking a little crazy lately in Woodbury. And I know we can't do something for the abandoned ice cream stand down the road, but when we have people texting me, have we become a hillbilly town because of what's going on down there? And I told them, I referred them to Mr. Hand, called the building department. I can't change anything, but people know that I'm on the beautification committee. They could reach out to me. So 32 needs a cleanup. When I say hillbilly, someone, there's been people hanging out at the ice cream, old ice cream stand, and it's, it looks crazy down there. But whoever got the lawn mowed down in front of the Gulf Station, whoever finally got that done, thank you. I don't know who did it.
Great job, Vic. Vic Ferrelli? Vic Ferrelli went out there with his lawn mower. Great job, deputy mayor.
Congratulations, Desiree, Rob, and Maria. I want to speak to you about Amdoor Park. A lot of people probably are not familiar with this at all, and I wasn't familiar with any of this until just, well, for the past month or so. And I'm Martha Lopez, Highland Mills. For the past month or so, a few community members have come to me and expressed concern over what they saw was water trucks entering the rez and collecting water. And I was getting pictures and videos, and they were following the trucks because, you know, they wanted to know what was going on. So we wanted to know, they asked me to speak before the board and asked a few questions. So I'll read them to you now. Are these water transfers, because they are, by the way, they are delivering water to Amdoor Park. So they wanted to know if these water transfers are compliant with local, state, and federal regulations? What impact does this water extraction have on the water levels and quality in our own community wells? Has an environmental impact study been conducted? I know it's a lot of questions that I always ask. I'm so sorry. Can we see documentation or agreements related to these transfers? Who is covering the cost of the extractions and transporting the water? Is it being funded by taxpayers or is there a separate payment arrangement? Is this type of water extraction and transfer happening in other parts of Woodbury or planned for in the future? What oversight exists to monitor and control such actions? How can the community be more involved in decisions regarding local water resources? Is there a public forum or a committee where residents can voice their concerns and receive updates? I know the answer to that. That's here. So, which is why I'm here. What steps can we as a community take to prevent or regulate the extraction of water from our municipal wells for use in other areas? Are there existing policies that need to be reviewed or strengthened? And of course, everyone is extremely alarmed only because of what's going on in South Blooming Grove. We don't want that happening in our backyards. So seeing these water trucks is a big source of alarm for many of our community members. And like I said, I'm home babysitting. I do that for a living. That's what I do for a living, and I'm getting phone calls, I'm getting videos, I'm getting emails from community members that are extremely concerned. And I know that you guys would have the answers, which is why I'm here, so.
So I will, and I'll call you in as backup. Go right ahead. You're a man of few words. Okay. So within Woodbury here, you either are getting your water from your own private well, you're either on KJ Water if you live in Country Crossing, or you're on consolidated water, okay? Which is where most of you are. I will get that. I'm getting there. We have one separate water district, okay, which is Amdoor Park. It is 48 homes only, okay? All costs associated with providing them with water gets rebuilt to each and every homeowner in there.
Wow.
Now, are we trucking in water? Absolutely, okay? Because we did a, I think a half a million dollar project last year that the residents paid for.
Wow.
Okay? Where we drilled down further for water. And then immediately when we did that, they were out of water again, basically, correct?
No, it lasted two years. And then whatever they're building up there is just using the water, and we can't keep up with it. What's that?
Are they building more homes or?
The water usage up there?
The water usage up there is almost doubled, and we've trucked in 840,000 gallons already.
Wow.
And they're using over a million, and our wells only pump 20 gallons a minute, both of them combined. It doesn't work. So we're in the midst of meeting with our engineer to come up with some kind of solution to fix that problem. But as of right now, within the next week or two, we're going to have a well rig come in and drill one of them 900 feet, because we went from 400 to 600, one of them 700, thinking we were okay, and it's not working.
And this right here is why we need to continue with the moratorium, because that's ridiculous.
And then the... And he's not, he doesn't, he's not kidding. It's a million gallons of water in a few months that is used...
And the only thing, the only question I have is every time that TAM truck went into the park, because that's the shortest route to get back and forth to Amdoor Park, one of my truck is with it. So I don't know why the people don't look and see the water truck either in front of it or behind it.
They just felt like they weren't getting it.
And go ask a question.
Yeah.
Is that they, what's going on in South Blooming Grove where they are bringing it or KJ where they're bringing it? They're just assuming.
No, I understand how nervous they are, because I would be, too, but...
Which is why they wanted me to come here and ask, right? Because they don't want to assume the worst. They want to hear what you guys have to say, and, because they just want to be reassured that what's happening in South Blooming Grove isn't already happening here.
Yeah, so this, this could go on another two or three weeks? Or this could go on till next May?
Wow.
We're trying to formulate a plan, like Mickey said.
Yeah, we're in the midst of working on...
With one of our engineers.
What's that?
To see what the solution could be.
No, no, no.
The water usage in that one particular area.
Right.
For 48 homes is probably the total of everybody in this room.
They're using the fire hydrant up there to fill the tanker. It's not coming out of the lake. It's coming out of our consolidated water system.
Out of our community well, right.
It's coming out of the consolidated water system, going to their water system. So everything's in compliance with local laws, with the health department, with us. TAM is registered with the health department to be able to haul water, because you can't use somebody that's not registered. So everything is all legal and up to par and...
All right.
Yeah, we would never do something like that.
I'll put something on our Facebook page.
Please.
Just explaining exactly what is going on, because I get the concern.
Right.
But we're on top of it, and it really is not anything to do with another municipality. It is just us trying to serve those residents there, but the usage is just out of control.
But I do have one question, and this came from my husband.
Uh-oh.
Okay.
Pablo, we like Pablo.
And he told me not to say it came from him, but it did come from him anyway. He was concerned, he wanted to know, and excuse me for our ignorance if, you know, but he was concerned that if we had low water, like if there was an area that had low water and there was a fire, and they had to tap into the fire hydrants and there's no water, what happens at that point?
Well, that's why we put this moratorium in place. When we had the fire on Schuett, I think my emergency message was, ladies and gentlemen, this is why we have a moratorium, because when you have something as tragic as a fire and people losing all their possessions, that we have our fire department there because we have enough water. But that's why you put, you keep a moratorium in place.
Right.
Until you solve the water issue, which we are making very good progress with.
We wouldn't let that happen. If, if our system, if our lower system was low, we would have water trucked in from a dealer, and we wouldn't be able to take it out of the reservoir or the hydrant up there. And that happened...
And how long did that take?
And that happened two years ago or a year ago when we had the fire on Schuett.
And how long did it take?
Well, I'm just saying...
Oh, to get water?
The fire on Schuett, they were right there, because we put water restrictions in because people were using too much water.
Okay.
We have certain regulations and certain heights of our tanks where we come to the board and let them know, listen, we're at this stage, we need to do this. We're at this stage, we need to do that. So it's all in play.
Well, thank you for listening.
We don't, you know, the, the sense that we like to put a moratorium in place, that's not true. We do it because it's not, we all came on different boats, but we're on the same ship now.
Right.
So you have to think of the greater good.
Right.
So that's why we do these moratoriums. So, thank you, Martha. Anyone else? Public comment? You could, you could leave. You know, he is a gentleman, but he doesn't always... Anthony Spagnu, ladies and gentlemen.
Puts up with my rap.
He's the night Columbus. He's the grand night.
Welcome, congratulations, Rob, Desiree. You guys get to have me text you more often. Everybody, we've been a busy crew, mayor and I.
Yes.
Sorry, and Desiree's now joined the, the team. So a lot of the signings that the mayor did today were for your Climate Smart. I know everybody was kind of chuckling at our Arbor Day, that long read of the Arbor Day, but there is a reason. And part of that is that your Climate Smart has been very busy. I know I've read through this, I'm gonna read through it one more time, and I bear with me. So, our Climate Smart is, as you know, a community of volunteers, right? We all volunteer, we all work, we all volunteer. But we have been putting together projects, events, tree plantings, flower plantings, you name it, we, we do stuff. Our meetings are held right here, the fourth Tuesday of every month at seven o'clock. It's an open meeting, you're all, everybody's welcome. Through NYSURDA, most of this has all happened through NYSURDA. Jackie can contest, she drug me onto this. I said, I don't want to do this alone. We started out as a Climate Smart Committee, and then we realized Climate Smart points were really hard to obtain, so we backpedaled a little bit, and we, we became a clean energy community through NYSURDA. So let me sum up NYSURDA. NYSURDA requires points, and we did four actions to become a clean energy community. Those four actions gave us a $5,000 grant, which we were using for tree plantings, our food scraps, and our, to further on into our community campaign. Community campaign included our electric vehicles, our heat pumps, and community solar. We hit tier one in our electric vehicles, which is basically five electric vehicles were purchased by Woodbury residents. That first tier gave us another $5,000. So currently, the village has $10,000. Those last $5,000 were used, are going to be delegated to you to purchase electric yard equipment and the Coolest Recycling event, which is coming up. Because we did those two, those two items, we received 1,000 points, which then brought in $10,000, which is what the mayor is currently working on. That will result in an energy audit for this building and the Osweiler Building. Tier two of our electric vehicles was submitted, we're about a week out from hearing from that, but that will be a $7,500 grant, which will go towards any upgrades that need to happen at the Osweiler Building. Tier three, I just applied for, but will come in in about three weeks. That will bring us 15K, which will go towards any adjustments or things that need to happen in this building after the energy audit. The best news is that through all of this clean energy stuff, and I think I, I told you guys before, we were on board through the DEC to become our Climate Smart Committee, which we just got word of that we went bronze. So, we will be getting our plaque. We did it, guys. So that's five years of bronze status, which through the DEC, doesn't really mean much, but, you know, they'll consider us for future grants. Woo! But what that bronze status did was gave us 800 points through clean energy, which I already submitted, and will bring us $50,000. So, anybody's counting, it's 92.5. And that last $50,000 will bring us an electric vehicle charger at the Osweiler Building. So, we're there, guys, we're there, we're on the map, right? Five years, we're gonna be on the map. You know, there'll be a press release, we're on the map. We were always on the map, but now we're on the map for a good reason. And then, so let me just, really quick, so I summarized all of our money. You guys know, we're out there, we're doing stuff. Sometimes we're at these events, nobody shows up. And we're just standing there like, okay, we've, we've, we really need you guys to come out every once in a while. We just hosted a Repair Cafe last Saturday, 20 people came out, 20 people. I know you all got something broken in your house. 20 people came out, and half of them weren't even from Woodbury. People from Cornwall came out, we had a couple from Chester, okay? So, we need you guys to come out and just, just keep the momentum going, because the more you guys come out, so the Arbor Day, that'll give us more points. We're gonna keep going, there's more money to be had. And so, it seems kind of silly that we've got an Arbor Day event, but it makes us a Tree City event. And so, come Arbor Day, we'll be planting a tree, come on out. Our next upcoming events that we've got coming on, every Wednesday, one of us is sitting at the Central Valley Library collecting food scraps, it goes over to Jones Farms. From there, we're gonna do a really cool pumpkin smashing event. So November 9th, at Sweetwater Farms...
Sweet Clover.
Sweet Clover, almost there. Sweet Clover Farms, bring your pumpkins, the fire department's gonna come out and help us smash them, we're gonna have some events where the kids can smash them, we'll, we'll make it a fun thing, we'll come up with some fun stuff.
Sweet Clover Farms, by the way, is the Palaea Winery.
Oh, yes.
That's Palaea Winery. So, he's opening the doors for either composting...
Yes, we're gonna do...
...or feeding the goats.
Feeding the goats, yeah, that, you know, we hope that we can work with Sweet Clover Farm to be a farmer's market, so we've got some high hopes over there. Next two, next Wednesday, we've got lecturer Jay Beaumont's coming out on PFAS, Chris's favorite subject, which is plastic, it's an ever, it's a, it's a forever chemical, it's in everything probably, but come on out, it's at the Senior Center from 6 to 8. We'll bring coffee, we'll bring danishes, come on out.
You're gonna have pastries?
We'll bring pastries. We'll bring pastries.
I'm there.
We're having a community cleanup, Rob, I think I texted you, we just need some bags. We're gonna meet right here on the 21st of September, if kids need community service hours, we'll sign off on that. You heard, we got our approval for the Junk in the Trunk, that's basically a mobile yard sale, so just put all the stuff you want to sell in the back of your truck, come on out, we just want to keep it out of landfills. Let's see, what else we got? Pumpkin smashing, that's about it. Thank you, everybody, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Coolest recycling, I lied, I'm not done.
Ah?
I lied. Coolest recycling is, uh, we've got a couple dates in October. Coolest recycling is if you've got broken refrigerators, air conditioners, anything that's got a coolant in it. We're going to be at the DPW, I have got flyers, but we've got a couple of dates, we'll be standing there and doing that. Now I'm done.
Thanks, Lisa.
My name is Carmen Mascher Giacomo. Tonight, actually this afternoon, we had our first Ethics Board meeting. I think we have a great team on, on board. I think it's pretty much all law enforcement, and they're pretty much very dedicated to the subject. So I want to thank the board for, for giving us this opportunity to serve, and, and I'd like to thank Tommy here, who's also part of our, our team here, and the rest of the board for choosing me as, as the chairman of the committee. Well, I'll do everything in my power to keep this place running efficiently and straight, as it should. It is extremely disturbing to me on the board side of the town board, and how they dumb down the ethics laws. I'm, I'm actually gonna make a request for, if there's any way for you guys to strengthen our ethics laws. I think they should be strengthened, definitely not weakened. So, again, thank you for entrusting me, and I think very soon we're gonna have an email address that concerned residents can put in their complaints if they have any, any, any issues with something that they see, something that they hear, at least we'll be able to investigate and look into stuff further. So, once again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Carmen. Carmen, I got your, the key to the village.
Thank you, sir.
There you go.
Literally.
Literally.
Supposed to be that big, isn't it?
That sideways, she's getting... Oh yeah, the key.
John Keller, Highland Mills, I got two things I want to bring up. First, I want to congratulate Rob and Desiree, and Maria. There's three of the probably hardest working people in this village. Mr. Freiband, I have no idea why you would vote against these two people. They are the hardest working people in this village. She is one of the most knowledgeable people in this village, knows more about anything in this village than everybody in this room put together. And you vote against her? What goes on in this brain of yours? Because everybody in here would like to know. Rob, he's got the hardest working bunch of guys in this village. And him, he's one of the most nicest guys I've ever worked around. Anytime I go ask him for something, I get an answer like that. Straight up. Never a question. You know, you took an oath to do what's right for the residents of this village. You forget, you drink the same water we do. You drive on the same streets that we do. You shop in the same stores that we do. You know that. You passed me today in the store. Don't be a sellout. You have an agenda. Make that agenda about the residents of this village. Do what you were proposed to do. Be a village trustee. Not a South Blooming Grove trustee, not a KJ trustee. Be a Village of Woodbury trustee, and do what's right for the village residents of this board. Okay, my next thing, and you don't have to respond, because you know what? I don't want to hear what you got to say. And I'm not sure...
John, keep it above board.
I don't think anybody else wants to. All right, now I'll take a breath. Mr. Mayor, this, you might like this, because you're the one having the block party.
Okay.
Some of you people may realize that 73 Washington Drive, Washington Avenue, has been a problem house for a long time. I was gonna bring this up last week at the town board meeting, but that ran for about three hours all over a bunch of blah, 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 blah. And for what reason, I don't know, they're a self-satisfying board, they serve themselves, they don't serve the residents of Woodbury. So, I'm gonna come here and ask that, maybe you, Mr. Mayor, will take this under consideration and do something about it. On August 29th, the Thursday before Labor Day, 73 Washington, there was a party. A rather large party that started around 4:00 in the afternoon. The party consisted of 100 people, maybe 150 people. Around sometime in the afternoon, they went to the neighbor next door, knocked on her door and asked her if they could use her swimming pool. Her husband wasn't home, she was scared, so she said, yes, okay. But you have to be out by 10:00. Something to that effect, don't quote me on the words. Around 11:30 at night, they had gone up about three houses up the block to another neighbor, knocked on his door, all drunk, and said, can I use your bathroom? He grabbed him by the throat and threw him off the property. Okay? They also broke, got into the other neighbor's car and stole her wallet, her purse, and all her license, and all her credit cards. Okay? Around 10:00 at night, the neighbor who they were swimming in the pool went to go upstairs to bed, looked out the window, and they were half naked in her pool, and I won't explain to you what they were doing in her swimming pool, but she has teenagers. I was about ready to call the police, and, don't, 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 don't. The phone calls were already made. I go upstairs at 11:00, and I look out the bedroom window, and there's three police cars down, down the street. So, I continued to watch. By 12:30, the police cars leave. They said they broke up the party. But guess what left? The three police cars, nobody else. As soon as the police cars left, music went back up. At 2:30, Karen made a phone call, along with some other people, the noise was getting too loud. Well, the cars started to line up in front of my house, the police came down, they left. 6:00 the next morning, the lady who had all the people swimming in her pool let her dog out. The dog pegged right to the side of her car, barking, barking and barking. Her husband came out to get the dog, there was somebody sleeping in her car. They escorted her to the train station. No one was arrested. No one. Now, do we have a right to be on edge? Yes. That was the third incident in a year and a half in our development. You live in our development on the other end. That's why I'm not worried about your block party, because I won't hear it. Okay? And if I do...
We're kind of, we're a wild...
If I do, I will be coming. But...
Actually come, but just for...
I will come. But, the point of the matter is, the first incident was a 14-year-old walked in on people that were burglarizing their house. And the burglars were upstairs. Okay? He called the police, they left. The next ones, about four or five kids came from up in Poughkeepsie area, and they went through the whole development overnight, and they went through all the cars. Do I have a right to be angry? Yeah. When is our police force gonna be held accountable? When are they going to do their job? No one got arrested? So I am pleading to you, Mr. Mayor, get together with the police, we need this IMA, get together with the Police Department, figure this out, because that self-serving board isn't gonna do anything. All they're gonna do is say, yes, yes, yes. We need answers. This needs to stop.
Thank you, John.
Good evening, everyone. Ray Hernandez, Highland Mills. It's been a long time since I've come to the Village Board. First, I want to say congratulations to Desiree, Rob, and Maria. Rob, thank you after 15 years to coming on to Woodbury Road to fix my road. I appreciate it, it's never too late. I wanna, I wanna acknowledge a town board member who's present here at, at the meeting, Sandy Cleybion. She was the only town board member that stood up and listened to us community residents, just like tonight, where there, all the seats were taken, we were standing in the back. She was the only board member at, in the town board that listened to the residents and voted no on that local law. And, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna, you know, we have a long history. But I, tonight I want to commend you, and most of the board here, for listening to all of us, and doing the right thing for the community. I know you have a policy with speakers up here cannot address the audience, but, Mr. Mayor, if you can, I can't stress enough to you to please let the residents know that it's very important for them to come out and vote. That's half of the battle. We have a lot of residents that do not come out to vote, and we have the wrong people getting into office. People that don't represent the interests of, of, of this community. So if you could do that for me and the entire board, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much for listening to us, thank you for doing the right thing, and thank you guys for coming all out. We did a great job. Yeah. Oh, I forgot, forgot one thing, today is National Woman Police Day, so I just want to acknowledge, if anyone has a female that's a police officer, thank you for your service.
Thank you, man, thank you.
I don't know how I follow that, but, well, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Broccoli, and the rest of the board for passing the moratorium and that resolution, that was the right thing to do, so I really appreciate it. Just to give you a couple of things, I know this will come up next, so I just want to make sure everybody understands some of the things that'll go on, because I know the next thing that's gonna come up is KJ running the pipeline from the city aqueduct, why can't we hook into that? I'll, I'll give you the quick five-minute, not even two-minute version of it is, the water above Kencico and White Plains is unfiltered and above the UV plant, so it needs a filter plant. You can't just tap into water and drink it like you can below Kencico Reservoir, because it's, it doesn't have the secondary disinfectant. KJ's building a filter plant. Just to let you know, the water from New York City is not free. The raw water is $27 to $2800 per million gallons without being treated. So if you just got raw water from New York City and used a million gallons a day, that's a million, 1.1 million dollars a year of purchased water the village would have to take on if they tapped into the aqueduct, and they would have nothing to show for it as far as infrastructure goes. Now, you're not gonna just pay $2800 per million gallons, because KJ, if you tapped in and partnered with them, would have to build a full blown filtration... in and partnered with them, would have to build a full-blown filtration system on that water and treat it. So they would have to add all their costs, the tens of millions of dollars that the filter plant's going to cost, their capital cost, their overhead, their GNA, and their chemical and, and maintenance and every other cost. So now you're going to be in the $3,000 to $4,000 per million gallon range. You just tripled what it would cost the residents of Woodbury. So that's not an option for, that you really want to do unless it's the last option you have. If you run out of groundwater, then maybe you look at that as an emergency, but it's really, really expensive. And I can tell you this for a fact because I am the largest, my company's the largest purchaser of New York City water outside of New York City. So we buy $20 million worth of it a year in Westchester County. So it's not cheap water. And lastly, you know, Ray, where'd you go? What you just said kind of really made me think about something. And one of the biggest things, and I hope people listen to this really better on all walks of life, if you're wrong, admit you're wrong and do something. And I'm going to say publicly, I've said it before, Jackie, I was wrong. And I, now I look back, I appreciate what you did and I, we miss you in the office and I would support you if you decided to come back 100%. But I want to thank you for still putting yourself out there after everything had happened. So I appreciate it and I'll be willing to admit that as well. And good night.
I knew I wasn't, I know.
Jimmy, Hyland Mills. Why do we start? Desiree, you said something about dissolving the village and that each area can be its own little village, which means each little area could be, has its own mayor. Like I could be the mayor of Brigadoon. Okay, so.
No, no, Vic lives there too.
Okay, Vic. I'm going after you, Jimmy. Well, first off is, Lisa, wow. I, I, you, you know what? Maybe you blow up there instead. But CJ, it's travesty you and Tara are not up there. But I thank you for what you're doing in the planning board and I thank you for showing up at every damn meeting and giving us your expertise on this. I mean, especially right now, we really need, need, you know, your advice and your guidance on this. So, this room was packed. Okay? This room was packed. Some people just came up here just to watch, to find out what's going on. Town board meeting was packed, standing room, and they were out, out the door waiting to speak. I checked it before we came here, the town board meeting had 780 views on YouTube. It varies from 50 to 100 normally. And this is, you know what this tells me? The Woodbury residents are starting to pay attention. They're watching. They're engaged. They're, they're, it's, this is what we need. We can't complain if we don't get involved. And this is wonderful to see. You know, rest of the way.
Lot of bathroom breaks. Their bathroom, they're going to the bathroom. They're coming back.
You know, all I can tell you is, I love this area. I do what I do is, it doesn't get personal until somebody turns personal. My, my thing is the issues. I'd rather sit here telling you how wonderful Rob looks, as old as he is, but it is. I love telling, you know, Rob coming in, doing what he did within my community, where he doesn't have to make a side trip. What, you know, I love mentioning Tara, you doing what you do, CJ. I, I'd rather focus on the positives, but right now, maybe it is. I'm loud, I'm vocal, I'm opinionated, and that's who I am. For me, I can tell you right now, I'm not going away. You know, I really truly believe that I am fighting for something. And, you know, that's just the way I am. So anyone doesn't like it, basically, you know, too bad. You know, it, show me I'm wrong, I'll listen. I was presenting something that I would really love the board to address. Information out there is this tremendous tax increase. I'm not here long enough to know what it was. And I would really love an answer, is this true or not? Is there somebody that?
You're kind of stealing my thunder.
You stepped on.
I'm sorry.
You stepped on a muck.
I'm running for mayor for the Brigadoon.
Okay.
So this is part of the campaign.
Okay. Because I actually was going to address that on my board comments, so I don't know if you want to wait till then or.
It's your call. You want to wait till then? That's fine. Or you could do it right now.
Okay. So I too, there's information out there, it was brought to my attention, there's information out there about the taxes. And the statement was made that the taxes went up by 41%. And I, honestly, my first reaction was, holy crap, 41%? How could that be? If you know me, I'm going to fact-check that. And I'm, and I'm not going to say that the numbers presented were wrong, because the numbers that they showed up there were correct. But it's the way you need, the way they presented the information is different. And I'm going to, actually, can I, I'm going to tie into this board if you don't mind. Hold on.
Audio visuals.
Yeah. You're welcome. Sorry, guys. Just give me one second, I know it's late, I apologize. Now it's not working. Why isn't it working? Before it popped up. It's not popping up. Stage mirroring. It is not connecting, unfortunately.
You can come back when you, anyone else in the public wishing to speak while we get, while we get that up and running?
It was working, I had it working before.
Go ahead.
BJ Mendelson, I've been a resident of Southern Orange County since 1988. I take care of two mentally disabled adults and two senior adults. That is my full-time job. On the side, I also happen to be a reporter. Believe me when I tell you that when you hear South Blooming Grove discussed, it's not an exaggeration.
I got it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Sure, you sure?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So first, I just want to thank Rob, Maria, Desiree. I mean, Maria was my bus driver at one point. I've known Desiree since I was 10 years old. So I tell you this because when we come up here and we have these discussions with the board, these things matter. This small town matters. If you do not retain control of the ethics rules and the rules and regulations that govern the operations of this board, you will not get it back. There is no help coming in South Blooming Grove. Orange County's not coming. The FBI is not coming. The IRS is not coming. Believe me, I spend a lot of time banging on those doors. No one is coming to help. So it's important that we hold our trustees to the highest account. And real brief, I just want to let everyone know that there is a subsection of the New York State Public Officers Law. It's subsection 36. It allows for the removal of trustees, as an example, if they are not governing appropriately. You do not have to wait for the next election if someone is doing something unethical, if a town board is acting reprehensibly, if someone is doing something illegal and they're working in government capacity. New York State has a law. It's Public Officers Law, number, subsection number 36. You can look it up and it provides all the details that you need to have someone removed from office should they decide not to govern appropriately. That's the conversation we're going to have. I hope you keep it in mind.
Sue Sariello, you're up.
Okay. So go back to your point. Okay? So when we look at this slide, and I know there was a video with it, it was showing that our taxes had increased by 41%. So I said to myself, well, I'm going to look at my taxes for a starting point. So when you look here, I went to, I looked up my taxes on the website and my taxes for 2021, this is just my village taxes, which by the way are made up of three different pieces. That's your, that's our general fund, our water, and our sewage. Okay? So this includes all of it. So here are my taxes for this year. So if you look, in 2022, my taxes went up $58 or 2.73%, 105 in 2023, and two, I think that says 89? Okay. In 11.75. Now, important to recognize that in 2024, we did budget for $800,000 for the fire truck that was coming due early. Okay? So if I back that out, my taxes would have only increased $7.50 for the, for the year. So if I look at it in total with the fire truck, I have a 17% increase. Without the fire truck, which is a one-time, is five, just over 5%. Okay? I volunteered you, Vic. So I looked at Vic's taxes too. His went up 16.62. Without that fire truck, 5.65. The point here is that the taxes did not go up 41%. Okay? We did collect $1.3 million more, of which 18, 800,000 of that was for the fire truck. Okay? Now, just think about when you have your own personal, if you made $12,000 a year and you said, you know what, I'm going to get a side hustle and I'm going to make $2,000 so I can work less at my other job. Okay? But guess what? So now I'm bringing in more money, I think I can have to work less to earn less money on my other job, I'm bringing, but what, what's happening? Expenses are going up. Right? So we have to look at that. The other slide that he's showing, oops, sorry. They're showing this slide and they're showing that this is all the money that was collected, the revenue that the village collected. 8.3 million, 7.3 million, 5.6 million. So keeping that in mind. Okay? I know, that's fine. This is, it doesn't. So the comment that they made was, I don't know where all the money is going. The village collected all this money over the last three years. Where is it going? I have no idea. It's kind of insane. The village is spending all this money. I don't see where it's going. Okay? So I would ask them, are your roads maintained, repaired, and plowed? Is your fire department adequately equipped to ensure the welfare and safety of all the residents of Woodbury? Were water restrictions avoided this summer due to the new well being placed online? Are your toilets clearing out when you flush them? Did your building department enforce village ordinances and conduct safety inspections and investigate complaints? The answer to all that is yes. This is where all the money is going. Okay? And if they're questioning the integrity of our village treasurer or this board, I mean, I honestly am insulted. Okay? Being questioned, and just so that you know, there are, here are some facts that you can take with you. For the last three years, the village has received an ideal fiscal, environmental stress score from the New York State Comptroller's Office. They're pretty much close to perfect. Okay? Fact, the village annual financial report is available online and clearly details all the expenditures the village has made. Fact, the village abstracts, which show all the expenditures being made by the village, including invoices, the vendor name, and the dollar amount being paid are all available on the village website. The village trustees sign every voucher to ensure accuracy, reasonableness, and to identify potential risks and areas of improvement. So to say you don't know where the money is going is, or you have no idea where it's going, is just, it's misleading. Okay? To say the least. When we look at the 41%, that is not 41%. So you may ask yourself, how, so how is the village, they collected 41% more over the last three years, but my taxes did not go up the same amount? You need to consider some additional information for that. First of all, we have, over the last three years, we had 70 homes in WP3 alone go on the tax rolls. Okay? They got COs and now they're on tax rolls. So what is that? That's revenue coming in. But on the other side, those take services as well. Right? So you have more revenue coming in. We've had things that, other revenue that offset the tax levy, like mortgage tax, right? That's gone up because, over the years, because house sales, right? They were going, going like crazy, so we collect mortgage tax. We have, interest on our earnings has gone up considerably because rates are higher. Right? And on the other side, the flip side, we have expenses that keep increasing, just like we're all feeling it at home at the grocery store, our energy costs. Our, our village is feeling those same things, like expansion of the building department and the renovations we just did on the building over the last two years. Right? The $800,000 fire truck. Two new trucks for our fire chiefs. That's another 170K. What about the, the general increases in energy? Rob's increases, gas, petroleum, paving those roads. Like I've made jokes, this is how much this costs? It does, and that's the reality of it. Our streetlights, the energy, all this water is not free. It costs money. So yes, we've incurred an increase. And listen, for me, that fire truck cost me personally, I think, $236. I am willing to put in my share to ensure that, God forbid, I need that truck to roll to my house. It's there, it's equipped, it's current, and that ladder can get up to the top of my roof because I sit on a hill. So these are all the things. I want people to fact-check what they hear. I want them to consider that there may be another motive for what people are saying, but know that both Vic and I sit here and when someone says something like that, we will look at it and consider it. If it was true, I would own it, but it's not true. And I think, I hope I prove that to you. And I can look, I've looked at other people's taxes in this room just to, I did a bunch of them. I did Mr. Frybans, I did our mayors, and they all fall within the same purview. Okay? Funny enough, I did look at Mr. Etzel's taxes just to run the same exercise. It's all on public record. And I actually found an error on his block, so his block was not getting, of, getting charged for the water piece of the tax. Found that a little ironic because I was like, gee, maybe, and I did my research. I looked on public record, I'm like, is he on a well? Maybe that would be the reason why. And he wasn't, he's on municipal water. So after doing some research with the water department and the assessors' office, it looks like it was an error at the assessors' office, which is currently now being corrected. Out of all, I think there was, except for four homes on that, there were four homes, only four homes on that, on that block that were getting taxed for the water. It's not a huge dollar amount, nobody get alarmed, but the fact is that, I guess you should, you know, you're going to bring that out. I did my research and I found something that I was like, wow, why is his numbers not falling in line with everybody else's? And it turned out that was the case. There wasn't an error. So, sorry, Mr. Etzel, I think your tax bill will go up slightly.
Thank you for the explanation because in all honesty, if those numbers were that, you know, outrageous, you know, we, we would have heard about it long before.
I think other people would be here to question, you know, like, when the tax, why didn't my taxes go up 40%?
I'm a math guy. I just wanted to know the numbers and, you know, you explained it to me. You know, as far as this, you know, I've known you guys for a little while. Okay? We have never seen, and it's not always eye to eye. We have disagreed, you know? But you guys have been legitimate, honest. Even when you have made it a point, you know, again, I always went out, you were the common sense one. You were the common sense one when you mentioned the senior center that, you know what, hey, honestly, it was lesser evil. I get up here, I'm, 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 I'm on my pedestal and I- I get up here, I'm, I'm, I'm on my pedestal, and I'm, I'm stuck. I argue my point until I'm blue in the face, but you stopped me right in my tracks. Wait, you know what? She's right.
Well, you know what? No matter, I went back and forth with our village engineer, I spewed out, well, what about this, what about this, what about that? No matter how I spun the numbers, where I looked at forwards, backwards, sideways, upside down, the end of the day, the seniors, leaving it, putting the overlay on the senior center, restricting, and making the greens, making the green space, no matter how I spun it, it was going to save a substantial amount of property from being developed. And that's where I feel our interests would lie, okay? He owns the property, he's entitled to develop per code. He can go to 65%, or do I want him doing 20, I think it was 23%?
And that's where...
With forever greens stays surrounding it. So, you know, like you said, is it the lesser of two evils? Maybe. I mean, hopefully it'll be a positive thing, okay? But at the end of the day, I have to live with myself, and I, I guess I'm just not a gambler to say, no, and I'll roll the dice and see what else we get. Because I'm afraid environmentally for the people surround, in that area, that spoke about all their concerns. I'm afraid for them if he gets to maximize that space.
See, you know, my, my, my real point was, you know, you know, you did what you felt was best for Woodbury, you know? Like Vic, I know Vic from Brigadoon, and when I first met Vic, Vic was the president of HOA, and he made a couple of decisions that were not, would not look favorably on because it was not the popular vote, but it was good for the Brigadoon. And as a whole, that's why, I, I will ask you the tough questions, because I truly believe you're going to give me the, the honest answer.
And I appreciate that.
Even though I don't want to hear it. So I do appreciate you breaking this down, at least I understand now that, you know, it's not 40, 40%. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, James. All right. Moving right along, anyone else?
Just a couple of questions from Mr. Suriello.
Yeah.
You mentioned that Mr. Etzel didn't pay his, whatever.
No, I didn't say he didn't pay. He wasn't, he wasn't billed, okay?
For how many years?
Since the inception of his home, 2017. But again, unless you look at the detail, I mean, let's be honest, how many people get their bill, their tax bill? Do you look at each piece, or do you look at the bottom line, okay? Most of us look just at the bottom line, okay? So for him to, it was only that I was doing this exercise that I said to myself, why is his number so different? Because they should be, again, they're not going to be exactly the same because everybody's assessed value is different, but because it just was, it was out of whack. It wasn't close, like, I did Vic's, I did Mr. Brady's, I did our mayors, right? I just, I just picked. Yours fell in line, you're good. I even, Mr. Mayor, I looked at yours, and yours was a little different, but then I looked, you are not on, you're on, you're not on sewage.
No.
You're on septic, which makes a difference, okay? So that was fine. There was an explanation. So when I looked at his, and I dug down, I said, hey, how come his, under the water, it's zero, okay? And that made me, you know, start digging down, okay? So I don't think it's something, he probably never even noticed it.
Do you think there's more cases of it within the village?
Well, my next step, just to be honest, like, that's what I talked to the mayor about, because I said, well, if this, I think we, and I spoke to Desiree too, and I'm going to speak to the tax assessor, because I think if they generate out of their system a report that gives me zeros in that field, right? And that not on, and if they're on private, that's okay, then we can eliminate those, and then we can look at why those are on zero. Now, they may have already, I mean, obviously, if I could say, I was going to say, maybe they've done that exercise, or maybe they took a sample, because there's a lot of people. But I just happened, again, it was an accident that I stumbled upon it, but I just thought that, let me do in case, and in case they were here and they wanted me to prove that, well, what did my taxes do? I had that information, okay?
I mean, they did a great job. And I'm just wondering, secondly, can we recoup our money?
I have talked, I, I don't know the answer to that question. Like I said, it's not millions of dollars here, it's a small amount. I'm sure it'll be adjusted for the next cycle. I don't know if they'll, if the, if they're going to back bill to...
Pursue it.
Pursue it. I, I don't know. In all fairness, it was our error.
Yeah. It's going to be time.
There's limitations on that, it's something I can certainly...
Yeah, how many years we could go back and possibly try to recoup some of the money of your...
Right. There was, I mean, again, it's not, it won't, it's, it's small, because it's a small, it's like the, a small piece of our, the smallest piece of our tax bill.
I consider it more symbolic that everybody pays their fair share.
Right. And my, my thought process was not that we needed to go back to get the money, was, well, is there anything else out there that we can actually catch, you know, to fix? Are there others like that? Now, that was a newer development, so then again, it turned over. I did recently get a file from our, the building department, because I just wanted to know how many homes close in WP3, and I spot-checked a few of them, and they all did have water on them. So hopefully, it was just an isolated incident, but I don't think it hurts to get a report to look at it.
Well, good for you, you get a great catch.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? All right, moving right along to department comments, starting with Mickey Phillips.
I don't know.
Bob Ryan?
So back in 1950.
When you walked uphill both ways to school.
You got nothing? John? Chief Burke!
I do, actually. And I want to publicly, no, I'll tell you quickly. I want to publicly thank, and the board for appro, oh, sorry, I don't need the mic. For, yeah, for approving Desiree and Rob, because we work with them hard, hard, and I think I speak for all the members, that we work with them, at least on a weekly basis, sometimes daily basis. I see Rob at 3:00 AM, we need his help when shutting down roads. Desiree, we have a question about what we can buy and purchase, rules, she's always there. I want to thank the two of you, thank you for doing that. Jessica, you're not going to get away either, I thank you too, for the public. She's also kind of the backbone, so she helps a lot. And Maria, I'd like to thank you, and congratulations for your help.
What about us? If you didn't get the word...
Because you were right, me. No, thank you, I just wanted to...
You were, you were told to service last night, you were in the department.
Well, it gives me great pleasure to introduce village treasurer, full-time, Desiree Potting.
I just want to thank everybody for the kind words that you said about me and Rob. I don't know. I want to thank my husband for actually coming to a meeting, even though he did leave shortly thereafter. I want to thank the four board members that voted in favor of this. This is a life-changing event for me, coming to the village full-time, which means that at the next town board meeting, I will be submitting my letter of resignation as town clerk, which I've been doing for 27 years. It's a big, big life event change for me. I'm very excited. The mayor has been begging me since he was a trustee to come here full-time. I've spoken to a lot of you individually, including the two new, well, not you, Matt, I'm sorry, but Jim and I have talked about it in the past, about me being here and not doing both jobs. It's been a love-hate relationship. I've always felt like I was in the middle of parents sometimes, but I was able to handle that, and it's just, you know, I, for those of you who don't know, I turned 50 two weeks ago, and I'm, I'm getting tired. So doing one job is, I'm going to look forward to it, I'm looking forward to being here full-time and being available to all of the trustees when they need me. 5-0. My clerk of the year signs? We'll, we'll leave them up over there.
But I thought that would come out of his mouth.
That's right. Did, did you know I was town clerk of the year in 2021? Oh, yeah, I was. New York State Town Clerk of the Year. Anyway, thank you again for your trust in me and for being on this ride as I make this massive life change. Thank you.
Thank you, Desiree. A potential advisor to the mayor.
Thank, thank you. Thank you to the board for Rob and Desiree and Maria. Des, as a CPA, I have always been very impressed with your accounting skills. It was one of the first things when I joined the village board in 2020, I didn't know anything about you, other than that you knew your stuff, and when we saw you in action with our budgets and the million questions I would have about abstracts, you knew it off the top of your head, without having to look at a sheet of paper. Invaluable treasurer to the village and the town, the village, you are very lucky to have her as your full-time treasurer. The treasurer of the village is a full-time job, for anybody who's going to argue it's not. They don't know the ins and the outs of everything that goes on. This board handles the heaviest of the heavy, of the, of the infrastructure and the capital budgeting that is required of a municipality. So you have your work cut out for you, but you have full confidence that you are going to, to do what you've been doing and then some. So congratulations, congratulations to the board. You have a tremendous asset in Desiree, and Rob. Can't forget about Rob and your birthday. The other point I want to make very quickly, because it's 10:20 and I turn into a pumpkin at 10:30, is the fact that a resident reached out to me several weeks ago, after hearing about the 41% tax increase, and said, how can you sit on the village board for four years as a CPA and raise our taxes by 41%? And, and, yeah, and like, what does your household budget look like, as a joke? So then provided me with the schedule, and I said, well, somebody then said, well, I have a schedule that analyzes the taxes over the last 15 years, and compared it, and I think this is an important factor that many people miss, to the annual rate of inflation every year, which is well above the tax cap, for those that don't know. So New York State says, you're not allowed to raise taxes more than 1%, but inflation's 5%, so good luck to you, municipality, figuring that one out. So somebody did a comparison from 2019 to 2024, over the period of village and town taxes, because you can't look siloed, right? Because things have moved over, over the years, and we've transferred departments. So looking at the village from day one to now, of course, it looks like there's a huge increase, because we have taken on departments since day one. And I will say, every year, we've consistently stayed below inflation. And overall, over the past 15 years, taxes combined, village and town, have only gone up by $859. 15 years, an $800 increase. What other bill can you say has stayed constant like that over 15 years? For the services of, including the police department, police, fire, water, sewer, roads? It's impossible. So congratulations, again to Desiree for doing that, because you've held us accountable every year, to the resident who reached out to me who did the work, and for proving that, as Sue and I, as the diligent accountants on the board, that we weren't negligent in our duties, and we didn't overlook anything ridiculous. So thank you, and I just thank you all for paying attention, that 41% seemed crazy. And as I said, I've said it on Facebook, and I'll say it here, because in person means more. If it doesn't sound right, it likely isn't, so please do your homework. So thank you, have a good night, be safe going home.
Like Mickey, I have nothing, but I do want to congratulate Maria, Rob, and Desiree. And for those of you who don't know, I refer, you know, street, highway, DPW superintendents to Rob for questions, and lots of people to Desiree for questions, so.
I've got a couple of emotions.
There you go. I appreciate you guys, and congratulations.
Thank you, Kelly. Jessica, anything? All right, board comments, and then we're, we're home free. Vic Furelli, deputy mayor, I'm going to go to you first.
All right. So I want to thank, I want to congratulate Rob, Desiree, and Maria, and for Susan and, and Tara, you guys make me wish I picked a career path in accounting instead of advertising. Listening to you tonight.
No.
So, can him?
Use the mic, man.
How about now?
Yep, talking.
Ads on, talk into it.
All right. Okay, we'll hold this thing. So it was great to see so many people here tonight. Thank you for taking the time out, attend our meeting and participating. To me, those aren't just words, though. I say them at every meeting. I generally mean it, and your present and input, your presence and input is essential to our process. Like you, I love our community. I'm very active in it, and I want the very best for it. I encourage all members of the public to come and share their opinions. While we're not always going to agree on everything, I truly value hearing your perspectives. There have been some times where public feedback influenced my decisions, and I've changed my stance on certain issues as a result of it. Tonight, I vote in favor of the water moratorium, because we must take action to preserve what we have to protect our future. CJ, believe it or not, I do listen to what you say every, every minute. We listen closely to what you have to say. We are often faced with difficult decisions, some of which may not always be popular, but I want you to know your voice is heard and given serious consideration or deliberations. So again, thank you for coming out, please keep coming out, and get involved, and get active, and voice your opinions. It does make a difference, it does matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Sue, you have anything else you want to add?
I do. Why not? Let's go a little longer. Okay. No, very quickly, this is going to change gears. First of all, I want to give a huge shout-out to the 11 high school students that came out yesterday from the Voice Ensemble at Monroe Woodbury High School to sing our national anthem. I think we can all agree that those young men and women added an extra special touch to the ceremony, okay? And they do volunteer their time to do that. Next, in the arts department, I'd like, the highest achievement for a high school musician is to make, in New York State, is to make it to Allstate, okay? This year, Monroe Woodbury had 10 students accepted and five students chosen as alternates. Cornwall had one high school student accepted and one chosen as an alternate. For Monroe Woodbury, this is only the second time in 25 years that they've had 15 students named to Allstate, so I'd like to congratulate all 10 of those students, 15 and alternates. They'll be going to Rochester in December. And the last thing I'd like to remind everybody, that Saturday is the Cheese Festival in Monroe, which a lot of, it is from 10 to 6 at the Ponds. There's tons of vendors, food trucks, lots of entertainment, which you, by the way, can see, a lot of those kids that went, are going to Allstate will be performing on the stages there. There's live music all day there, at local restaurants, like Tequila Grill will be there selling food, and I will also be there with Monroe Woodbury Music Boosters, raising money for scholarships for all of our music students. So please come by and say hello to me, I'll be there all day from 10 to 6. And I think that's it for today.
Thank you, trustee Suriello. Trustee Fabro.
First, I'd like to start up by thanking you, even the folks who left, I understand it was a long meeting, for coming out tonight. I'm going to somewhat echo Vic here. We may not get everything right up on this board. I personally am not always going to get everything right, I can assure you of that, but I try my best every single meeting, and I take your comments to heart. I listen to them, I listen to CJ, I listen to Maria, I listen to Jimmy, and I wouldn't have ran for this village, this village trustee position if I did not care deeply about this town, as many of you do, and you come and you show us every single meeting. And I hope that you recognize that in my votes and my actions. I'm going to move on now. First of, first, sorry, excuse me. I'd like to thank Lisa for all the hard work she does, she's a machine, the Climate Smart Committee, the rest of the group, all those grants we're earning, we're going to keep earning them, I'm sure, and as she said, don't forget about all her events, Junk in the Trunk, the PFOS speaker that's coming up next week at the library, and is, and the Pumpkin Smash in October. I'd like to congratulate Rob, I know you've heard this like six times at this point, Desiree, Maria Rubio, Maria is being appointed the beautification chair. You all keep this village humming, it wouldn't happen without you. I'd also like to thank everybody who came out to the 9/11 ceremony yesterday, or, sorry, that was yesterday. It's been a long week. It was a great ceremony, it is every year, and it's, it's truly touching if you haven't been. I encourage anybody who has never been to come out next year, and we'll see you there. Thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you, trustee.